All right, Mr. Mayor, we are live. The floor is yours.
Great. Good afternoon. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council. This is a special meeting. It is Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. It's 3:30 PM. This meeting is being held via teleconference, and I'll ask the clerk if she could establish a quorum, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
And Mayor Hedy.
Present. Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. And pursuant to Assembly Bill 361, 2021-22, in Government Code Section 5495-3, this meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on Channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 and Government Code Section 5495-3, and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for this meeting. Thank you and welcome, everybody. This is a special meeting to appoint members to several of our advisory committees. I will say upfront to our council, unfortunately, our two applicants for the Recreation and Parks Commission have withdrawn their applications, so we will not be doing any interviews for Parks and Rec. That's Mr. Louis Ramos and Zachary Warner. Just tell you that upfront, so thank you for that. Some instructions from the inception of Zoom. We've changed our format just a little, not significantly. We have two advisory boards today that we will be looking at applicants for. First is our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. We have four vacancies and four applicants for that. And then we also have our Harbor Advisory Board. And for that, to the right page here, we have two vacancies. One for the South Bay Los Osos resident at large, and that has two applicants and one vacancy. And then we have the member-at-large representative for which we have one vacancy and one applicant. And we will be doing those separately. Normally, we ask each individual council member to have one question for each applicant, and that question being the same for each applicant. In other words, ask one question, and then I'll call on the applicants to go ahead and respond to your question. So unless there are any questions, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for items on this special agenda only. And I'll ask, Highland, do we have any public members that would like to speak at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this moment, I see no raised hands in the queue.
All right, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. And we will start with the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. I'll go ahead and ask our city clerk to promote Mr. John Martin, Ms. Courtney Schepler, Ms. Tina Werner, and Mr. Michael Woody to the panel. And I'll just look to see if they are with us. All right. Can everybody hear me? John, can you hear me okay? Rosie, can you hear me okay? Courtney, you're muted. Can you hear me okay?
I sure can.
Great, thank you.
I was just switching computers. I'll go on video as well.
All right. And then Tina, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I can.
Thank you, ma'am. And then Michael, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, welcome to all of you. And we want to thank you on the part of the council for applying to our important advisory boards. They mean very much to the city council. They do all focused work as promulgated by the council through policy, and we appreciate that. One of our most active, they're all very active, but the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee reviews all of our, much of our financial information. This is a four-year term ending January 31st, 2026, and we have four current vacancies. And what I'll do is ask each of the applicants, I'll go ahead and call your name, if you'd give us a one-minute overview of why you want to serve on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. Just about a minute would be great. And then I'll ask each council member to ask one question, and I'll start with one of you. And then I'll try to rotate so that I'm not always starting with the same person so that it's as fair and equitable as possible. So that's our process there. We ask that you try to limit your answers to the questions to one minute as possible because of the number of applicants that we have. If you go a little over, no harm, no foul. We're not going to punish you, we promise. And again, we want to welcome you and just say, relax. We're glad you're here, and we appreciate you applying to our Advisory Finance Committee Board. With that, I'll start, if I could, with John Martin. Mr. Martin, could you introduce yourself, sir?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is John Martin. I am retired, residing in Morro Bay. Have spent the last four years volunteering on the CFAC and the last two years as the chair. And I think we've done a lot of good work and would like to continue that.
Great, John, thank you very much. Courtney, can you introduce yourself, please, and welcome?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Courtney Schepler. I moved to Morro Bay in 2020. My daughter is a student at Cal Poly, so we had, you know, kind of fallen in love with the area. And then our joy of the pandemic was being able to work remotely. And so we said, let's do something crazy and move down there. So we did. And happy to be here. And now that we're settled, ready to get involved in the community and give back. I have a finance background in audit, accounting and finance. Currently work for Kaiser Permanente. I'm the CFO for Medicare and Medicaid nationally for Kaiser. So used to working with big numbers and digging through thorny issues. So hoping that my skill set can be of value to the city.
Great, welcome and thanks for applying. We appreciate it. Tina, welcome and give us a little introduction.
Thank you. I've only been here four years as of this month in Morro Bay. And I've served on the CFAC committee for two years. The council elected me a midterm, so I served half a term. I am new to city finance and government accounting in general. And I have a business and tech background. And, you know, I'd love to continue. I've got a lot to learn. It's a big topic. And I like being tied into what's happening in our community. So I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tina. Appreciate that. And then Michael, welcome. And if you'll introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. My name is Michael Aaron Woody. I've been a professional civil engineer for over 20 years in California as a licensed contractor and as a professional engineer. With my undergraduate work being in engineering, where I graduated from Fresno State with Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. My master's, I'm a master's in public administration from Harvard University. Professionally, in the past, I've served as a member of the Fresno City Council, a community of just over half a million people with an annual budget of roughly $800 million. Over the years, I've worked quite a bit in public policy and out in front of the community. Today, I am also the owner of Struck One Engineering Construction in San Luis Obispo, where we focus on construction contracting with the U.S. Department of Defense, Fish and Wildlife, and the U.S. Air Force. My personal relationship with Morro Bay is my family has a long, very colorful history here in San Luis Obispo and specifically Morro Bay. And being that as a mayor, I take real pride in being an integral part of this region. I have been through the budget for the last fiscal year and familiarized myself with the problems going on with the city of Morro Bay. And I really look forward to answering a lot of your questions here today.
Great, Michael, thank you and welcome as well. With that, I'll try to rotate council member questions as well. I do my best to keep track of who I call on. And so it's probably the hardest part of the meeting is to rotate this. And then again, I'll start with one of the panelists to answer first, and I'll try to rotate that each time with a different question. Councilmembers, if you don't have a question, that's fine also. You can certainly pass, but I just wanted to let you know that either way, I'll go through the list and we'll go ahead and start. If we could start with you, Courtney, if you don't mind me calling you Courtney. And I'll start with Councilmember Addis first. Do you have a question for the panelists?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome to the CFAC applicants. I was a member of CFAC, so I know what you're getting yourselves into. And here's my question. When I was on CFAC, I really viewed my role as one of giving high-level input to help guide our city. But I know that it's easy, given the amount of knowledge that you have, to kind of want to get into the weeds with staff. So I'm wondering, how would you differentiate your role as a volunteer on CFAC, even though you have a lot of knowledge? Differentiate that role between yours and the role of the staff people?
I think for me, it's really understanding the role of the city staff. I'm reflecting back. I was on the Measure A Oversight Committee for the city of Alameda or the Alameda School District. And it was a similar thing, where we had the school district staff were supporting the work of the committee. And you really had to figure out, you know, kind of, all right, we're not going to peel back the layer further than this because this is really the job of the administration of the school district, and we've got to trust them to do their work and what do we really need to know to do our work? And occasionally, you are going to have to peel back the layer on something just so you understand it or you understand the connection between various components. But I think it is important to understand that we have a, you know, a well-staffed city with, you know, competent professionals. And we're not there to do their job for them or ask why this check was written or that check was written. But really, how can we take a step back and look at the big picture of what's going on for the city? And, you know, I also see our role as being, you know, helping to provide some additional public presence around what happens. You know, you see the things that start to circulate on social media. And, you know, the more of us that are out there that kind of understand what's happening, hopefully, we can help, you know, with the story.
Great, thank you, Courtney. Tina, can we go to you next, please? And if you need the question repeated, I'd be happy to have the council member repeat it.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, council. So with my two years now under my belt, I mean, and also obviously the bylaws and all of the information. I mean, it's apparent that we are an advisory committee. And we do dig in more, I'll be frank, than I thought we would when I first was elected to this role in terms of, to Courtney's point, there is a lot to understand. And, but it is apparent to me, A, we have an amazing staff, in my opinion. And it is not necessary for us to, not only is it not a role, it's not necessary for us to play that role. They give us excellent information and are available to us if we did need them for question and answer. And I feel that, as I've been learning in these two years, and it was all COVID, which was kind of a bummer, the kind of information and then the other people that have been on the committee and their expertise has been exemplary. And that line is clear to me, that we are an advisory. We make recommendations for the city council. And we take in the information and do the best we can to frame that recommendation such that the council can take action if necessary.
Thank you, Tina. Appreciate that. Michael, please.
Okay, there we go from your button. Sorry about that, Mayor.
No worries.
Really, it was something like this. I think it comes down to three very particular issues. One of which is that when you have any advisory-type committees, such as what we're doing here from the community, part of our role is to instill a public confidence that sometimes can lack in any community across the United States today, especially with all the political fighting that's going on. The community needs to know that they do have a voice, not only through their elected officials, but through a public advisory committee that's overseeing a lot of what's going on. So that way, we can help instill publicly a confidence that's sometimes can be lacking in our community. The second idea would be to understand that government works best when we all understand our roles, that we fully understand that it's the elected officials that are truly the ones taking the word of the community and implementing that into public policy, where we have staff coming in and providing their professional recommendation over what needs to be done. And then you have an advisory group, such as us, going in there and saying, okay, here's what, here's what would be our advice for what is going on here today. And, I'm sorry. And here's, as an advisory capacity, I'm terribly sorry about that.
I love it. That's okay. I'm pulling my dog back right now.
As an advisory committee, that we make sure that we create the best type of advice for the council and for the staff, and making sure that we all work hand in hand. And that becomes a third idea in this, is understanding that we're all a team working together for one thing. And that's the betterment of Morro Bay. And we're all here today because all of us truly do care about this community. And that's what it's really all about. As long as we understand that, I think we'll all do a really good job.
Great, thank you, Michael. John, please.
Okay, yeah, I have a little bit of a different view of it, and I may be mistaken. The question says that CFAC is supposed to do just high-level review and not get into the details. And other than the WRF review, I'm not sure where that actually says that in the bylaws. I know that the quarterly WRF review, actually, we were told we just want a high-level review. But the way I look at the CFAC is that it's more akin to the Planning Commission, where you have assembled a team of subject matter experts, and they actually do ask some of the more detailed, hard questions that perhaps the city council doesn't have the time or the expertise to do. And so that we would operate and function more like a planning commission. And then things go from us with recommendations to the city council. Now, like I said, if I'm wrong about that, then that's fine. But we have done quite a bit of hard questioning of the staff. And I do agree that you have a very professional and capable staff. You're a little bit short-staffed right now, as you know, during this transition period. And we've always, the folks on the CFAC have always told the staff that we'd be happy to do things like proofreading reports or things like that before they went to the city council. But anyway, that's my take on it.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that very much. So we'll go to our second council member, Councilmember Barton. Your question, and if we could start with you, Tina, this time, please. I'd appreciate it. Councilmember Barton.
Okay, hang on a second here. I'm flipping my pages here. Getting to, here we go. Well, first, I'd like to say thank you, Tina, for stepping in and serving two years already. That's a valuable, valuable time, and I'm glad to hear how much you feel like you've been learning. So I'm looking at your background here, and I'm wondering, what did you retire from? I'm sorry.
I'm just saying that current application. I am an ex-program manager, most recently from Hewlett Packard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so Silicon Valley IT project management. I've actually, I'm retired now almost four years, so I'm kind of dated for most people. But I owned my own technology staffing company for a number of years. I worked for Oracle, Intel, Advanced Micro Devices. Names people don't make the front lines anymore with Google and LinkedIn and Facebook. But at the time, they were considered pretty worthy. And so my background is kind of eclectic in that sense. But, you know, business owner and project management, sales, and specifically around IT and applications. So to try to sum it up.
Yeah. Wow.
That's private industry, right? Not any government role whatsoever. That's why it was such a learning for me.
Right, right. And why it's been so valuable to have you, to have a different perspective.
Well, yeah, I guess. I mean, I appreciate that. And I am trying to adapt to how to even communicate because it's different, right? So, yeah.
I could just clarify, Councilmember Barton, I guess that was a clarifying question on her resume. Do you have one general question that you have the panelists could answer that, so we could be fair across the board? Thanks.
Where do you see the committee in the next two years?
Okay, that's really a great question because, you know, there's some fascinating things that are in front of us as a community, which is one of the reasons why I wanted to stay with CFAC, even though I don't know that CFAC will have any kind of role with the issue around our stacks, the wind offshore, the potential of battery. I mean, there's a lot that's in our future. And two years is kind of the horizon, when maybe they will, we will be active or see activity around decision-making as a city and as citizens of the community. And even though the WRF project was unusual in a sense to give to us as a committee based on why we were created, and that is a very detailed and complicated project. And though I don't have knowledge of building that kind of facility, I have found that it is particularly interesting to be involved in that kind of a discussion or see those kind of presentations. And I don't know if we will have the bandwidth or as a committee, because we fill up our agendas. But I do think there could be the possibility that there is a future project, like the WRF project, amongst some of the things I mentioned, that may end up, as, you know, CFAC may have some sort of advisory role, and I would like that. Other than that, I mean, Q and E is an important place for us to be. And if that's where we stay for the next two years, I'm fine with that. But I'm, you know, I mean, being involved in CFAC makes you pay attention to things, whether it's on your agenda or in your bylaws or not. And so I appreciate that, you know? I hope that answered your question.
It did very well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Michael, please.
Eventually, I'll start hitting that meeting button correctly. If I understand the question correctly is, where do I see CFAC being within the next couple of years or maybe our role within the next few years? If I understand it correctly, councilmember. The biggest issue that I see that's been going on, where I see where we could be in the best advisory capacity for all of you is to help give direction on bringing back the health of our local economy due to, obviously, the pandemic that's been going on for the last couple of years. It's been devastating to everybody, especially out here in the private sector. A lot of government agencies have been, obviously, feeling the effects. Obviously, the city of Morro Bay is no different. The general fund, emergency fund, I believe it is, is coming along very, very well. All of you have done an amazing job bringing back the health of the local government economy to a level that I didn't think you guys would get back to for at least another two or three years. So that's been stunning. But I think it's to also help get some guidance and some advice on where we still need to go and be able to get into the budget and to look at how it's directly affecting the lives of everybody here in Morro Bay and what we can do to help tweak you or guide you and advise you on what can be done in order to help out people in this community. So I would say, in a priority sense, that would be a priority for definitely the next couple of years in the direction that I think that this advisory committee of many that we should be going down.
Great, thank you, Michael. John, please.
Well, as Tina mentioned, the quarterly WRF reviews, that takes up a lot of our time these days, and I think that's going to be still going for the next couple of years. The Measure Q and E, of course, that's part of what we do by law. And I think, but the overwhelming thing is, whatever the council wants to assign to the committee to further its goal of fiscal sustainability. And we'll take a look at anything that fits within that category.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. And then if we go to Courtney, please.
A newcomer to the committee, I don't have any preconceived notions of where I think it should be in two years. So I'm really coming in expecting to have the opportunity to meet folks and learn. And I imagine, ask me the same question six months from now, and I may have a stronger opinion. So I'll just be learning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Heller. And this time, if we could start with you, Michael. So Councilmember Heller, welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank all four of you for applying. CFAC is one of the most important advisory committees, and I want to thank you, each and every one of you, for stepping up, making this commitment. It's very helpful to staff and to council. Question I'd like to ask is, at the end of your experience of having been on this committee, how would you describe it? If it went really well for you, what, how would you describe the experience?
If I could just actually repeat your video cutout, and all I heard was five minutes.
I mean, my brother-in-law's dead, so.
Problem, I'm sorry about that.
It's a nice desk, by the way, also.
It is nice, isn't it? Yeah, I like it. So this is kind of an open-ended question. But at the end of your two years or your four years on this advisory committee, how would you like to describe your experience?
Well, starting with me, I think like anybody in this community, hopefully, when this is done and hopefully, you know, if this does work out here today, I'd be honored if it did. An experience like any other community experience where you felt like that you did your part in order to move a community forward and to make, not just your voice heard or my voice heard, but the voice of so many other people that are in this community. It's being able to, like with anything in life, look back and say, did I make a difference? Did I, was I a part of something that truly moved a community forward and moved this area forward? So I would say, you know, in a very simplistic term, that would be the best part of all of this is knowing that you can do that. And I would hopefully, like, look back, and I'm sure I will, and be able to say that, yeah, we helped move things forward in this community and made a positive impact on the city of Morro Bay and people here.
Thank you. Thank you. John, can we go to you next, please?
Okay. Well, I think a couple of things. First of all, I don't think the CFAC really has the role of giving our individual opinions about policies for the city. That really is for the city council to do. You know, our role really is focused on finance and the execution of that finance, the reporting of that finance, what kind of information is getting to the city council, of that finance, what kind of information is getting to the city council, what kind of information is going out to the public, make sure that stuff is accurate and complete and that all the options, all the viable options have been looked at. So, yeah, we're a citizens committee, but we're not just bringing our personal opinions and recommending to the city council what we think the council should do based on our opinions. I think it's much more technical. And so from, from my perspective, I think one of the biggest things we can consider accomplishments when we look back is, was the information that came out of CFAC and went to the council and to the public, was that information accurate, complete, and comprehensive? And if we can do that, I think we've accomplished our goal.
Thank you, John, appreciate that. And then Courtney, please.
Well, I would hope at the end of four years that after being through the learning curve, that we as a committee or me as an individual has had the opportunity to provide, you know, either fresh ideas for a topic or a risk area that's emerging, the streamlining potentially the way that information is shared with the public or presented to the public in a way that makes it more digestible. I think that's always important if people can really understand the situation or the circumstances of a, of a situation. That's something that, you know, I've always prided myself on as being able to communicate complicated things in a way that people can understand. So if I'm able to help with that, then I hope it'll help the community as a whole.
Great, thank you. And Tina, please.
Well, all of the applicants all have elements of how I feel. So at the end of four more years, from my perspective, first of all, I will really, I believe, really understand the financial responsibility of managing the City of Morro Bay better than I do or did when I started and as I continue to grow. But I guess what I would take away for myself as important, to John's point, you know, being a solid participant in the process of recommendation and communication around these financial issues. But also personally, I think it's really important that we as citizens actually understand how our city works and that I'm actually, the reason I started this to begin with is I wanted to become a more valuable citizen. You know, and I wanted to make better decisions as a citizen and not just based on my opinion. I wanted to have experience. So for me, the reward would be feeling like I achieved my objective, that I served, that I served well, that I learned, and that I am a better, frankly, citizen, as maybe altruistic as that sounds, but that's what I was going for.
Fantastic, thank you so much. And I think that takes care of Councilmember Heller's question, and we'll move to Councilmember Ford. And if we could start with you, John, please, and Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all of the applicants here and those who have served already in the past on CFAC. I really value all the work you've put into this board and just very much appreciate it. And I appreciate the fact that the other two of you are willing to put in the work as well. My question is really regarding preparation for upcoming meetings when you receive, you know, a packet of information for your upcoming agenda. I would just like for you to sort of just give me an idea of how you manage your time and what is a preparation that you either currently are doing or plan to do leading up to that meeting? For example, really quick, you know, are you a person who reads it as quickly as possible and gathers questions and puts those questions towards staff before the meeting? Or do you save them all up for the meeting? You know, that sort of thing. So that's pretty much it. Thank you so much.
John, please.
Thank you, Jen. Yeah, I read, I read it all and formulate questions and send them as soon as I can. Typically, the questions I'll also submit on Monday, meetings are on Tuesday. And it used to be that staff was able to actually answer our questions in writing, but now because of the recent Brown Act interpretation, that hasn't been able to be done. So the questions we submit and then they get answered at the meeting, which makes the meetings a little bit, a little bit longer. And I'm not sure if that wrinkle can be worked out or not. It was really helpful when we were able to get written questions back, especially on numbers questions. Those, those kind of things are often difficult to, to really hash out orally at the meeting. But that's what we, what we've been dealing with, so.
Thank you, John. And if we could go to Courtney, please.
So being a newbie, I don't know how far in advance we'll get the materials, but as long as there is a weekend in advance of the meeting, then I would appreciate that time to review it. I do review materials in detail. Certainly, I'm happy to send staff any questions that I might have. It sounds like they may have to address them during the meeting instead of in writing in advance. But yeah, I, you know, always like to give people time because some questions are, you know, take a little bit of research to answer. So, you know, I always think it's best to give people time to prepare for answers as opposed to, you know, I got you in the moment and, you know, I've got you on your heels because, you know, now you don't know how to respond, so that's definitely not my style. So yeah, look forward to having enough time to review it. I'm on a, on the board of an HOA right now, and unfortunately, our management company in the last year has done a really good job of getting us our packets about an hour and a half in advance of our meetings. And I'm in the middle of my birthday, and so that hasn't gone very well. So as long as our process works better than that, I should be good to go.
Ours does work better than that, fortunately. Thank you for that. Tina, please.
Okay, so what gets submitted is frequently voluminous. It is not a trivial undertaking on some meetings. And honestly, it's can be overwhelming. I mean, going through a WRF report, I can't, oftentimes, I can see certain things in that report that I might have a question about, but I am not able to dissect that in the time allowed or with my background. And to be honest with you, on some level, I rely on my, the other responsible bodies for that particular project, as an example, to have done their homework. And so that I kind of feel that my oversight of that is a nice to have, but not critical. So I find the WRF report to be, and understanding, challenging. And then there's also all the budget information and all kinds of things that come to us that when you talk about detailed review, if you have a financial background, you might literally get into every single page and do detailed review. But my focus has been to understand Q and E and, you know, things that if you look at the agenda, the agenda will make a recommendation of what staff is asking and so that I can keep my, because I'm learning, and so that I can keep myself somehow focused and not get lost in the detail. So I think it's actually a struggle. I think it is an excellent question, by the way, because for me, I, I find it to be a struggle to get through all of this information. And honestly, I rely on people like John and other people, and I'm grateful that they have the background that they do because they can ask a more discerning question than I can at this point. And that helps me understand the nature of what's being discussed much better than maybe when I came into it. Not all the time, but some of the time. So while it's good to have someone like myself who might be new to this arena, and I am grateful that I am serving and I would like to continue to serve, I would never make up the committee of people like me. You want people who also have a background like someone like John does or even Courtney and, you know, other people that have served on the committee. They've got strong financial backgrounds, and it's helpful. And whether they're applying private industry or public, they, they look at the problem differently sometimes. Don't know if that answers your question, but I hope it does.
It does.
Thank you, Tina. And Michael, please.
Sure, thank you so much. Yeah, it's probably one of the most important questions that's ever been, that's been asked on this today is how do we bide our time to get through something like this? One of the lessons that I've learned from working in government in the past and being elected official and dealing directly with these types of budgets and committees is that government is like trying to drink a glass of water out of a fire hydrant. It's amazing how much information comes at you all at the same time, and you have no idea of this until you get into the middle of it and you think, holy cow, this is absolutely amazing how much information's going on. In the past, when I dealt with this, when we would do our yearly budgets in the City of Fresno, it was basically just sitting there and saying, okay, let's make a very methodical way of how I'm going to go through this. Now, I've been able to use that same ability that I've learned in the past of sitting on these county boards and city boards and retirement boards and everything else and to create that same, and use that same organizational structure in what I do professionally as well as an engineer and as a contractor for the federal government. So the idea of saying, okay, let's go into this meeting, and I realize that I'm going to be getting a stack of paperwork that's going to be rather intimidating at first if you've never seen it. I've seen that before and I've learned very quickly, here's my game plan. I go through it like anything. I take it, I carefully go through all the sections, understand what I'm reading, read every page of it, create the type of questions that have to be done, and especially with the Brown Act, you've got to make sure it's done correctly. And then just methodically go through it one by one, like everything else I've had to do in my life. But like I said, I think what helps me in this application with this is that this is something that I have a real good background with, so I pretty much know what I'm getting myself into when it comes to municipal budgets.
Great, thank you, Michael, appreciate it very much. Okay, my turn, and this time, if we could start with Courtney. And this question's for all of you, of course. The city council obviously has the responsibility of setting policy for the city. And the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee receives basically a work plan from the city council on an annual basis besides the Measure Q and E responsibilities that are set by law. My question to you is, and I realize we have some tenured versus non-tenured individuals that have not been on the committee, but I assume also that all of you have some sense of city finances and what the financial condition of the city is. The question is, what perhaps two or three work assignments would you hope to receive from the city council if you were appointed to this position? And we'll start again with Courtney, please.
Can you elaborate a little bit more? You said, what work assignments would you like to receive?
Yeah, so the city council sets policy on an, on an annual basis with regard to various city policies. We have a number of city goals that guide basically our work for the year. And from what you have perhaps reviewed or seen with regard to this committee, I guess my real question is, what would you like to see assigned to you from the city council? Or maybe another way of asking it is, what do you consider to be financially the most important two or three items that you think the committee should review?
Let's see. It helped a little bit, but I, I do think I'm still coming in, you know, just with not quite enough information to be able to answer that robustly. But, you know, any, you know, you mentioned the measures on top of that, you know, there's special projects, if there are certain, you know, initiatives around cost savings or HR or benefits, those are areas I've had a lot of experience in personally, dealing with, you know, extremely complex HR and benefits items for, for a very large organization. So personally, I'd be happy to dive in on a special project like that. I wasn't sure if the question was for me as an individual or for the committee as a whole. Oh, you're muted now.
There's no wrong answer, by the way, it's for both.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Let me go to Tina.
Well, you know, ideally, I would like to see our city make more money and be more financially viable. And I don't know what, I mean, as in ignorance, I don't know what the potential revenue opportunity exists in any agreement that we might make with Vistra, for example, or anything along wind and energy type decisions that are good for the state, good for the country, good for the world, how in fact, I would like to know how in fact, they do positively impact us as a city or could impact us, and what kind of financial opportunities are there for us? And so I am interested in those things because they're big and I believe they're coming. And I mean, you know, there's some things that are going on or that I'm, you know, that we're aware of, like the parking fees. I'm not totally sure how I feel about that. I mean, as a, I haven't really looked at it entirely. I under, I understand, and this dovetails into the harbor. I almost considered throwing my hat in the ring for a position at the Harbor Committee because I felt like that's the next huge thing to really understand about our city. And I don't know if there's an opportunity, because I haven't played any role there, for CFAC to help or review or consider whatever, however the harbor functions financially and, and if there's any opportunity. But because it's so important to us, it's important to me. Those are my things.
Great, thank you, Tina. Michael, please.
Yeah, thank you for the question on that. You know, being that I haven't sat on this, obviously, I haven't sat on this advisory committee before, but, you know, have a bit of a background in something like this. As far as, you know, and as you pointed out, it's the mayor and the council that sets the policy, but I would say that, you know, if you were sending out assignments, I would like to think in terms of immediate couple of items, such as, you know, I realize that, for example, the General Fund, Emergency Fund is, is coming back very strong, very well. I don't know the exact number where it's at at this point, but I would say definitely that would be one of the items that would be utmost important for the people of this community as well. It's very clear from your last budget that, you know, you're well below your California GAN limit that was adopted about the late seventies, I think seventy-eight, seventy-nine. So, you know, we've got that level under control. The next one would be, you know, strategies in terms of what does it take to make sure that we don't have to take the same type of staffing cuts that you guys had to do within the last few years and what strategies that we can use in order to keep staffing up. You have a staff of roughly 100 FTEs right now, and obviously, you know, maybe there's a way to make sure that we give those folks the ability to not only have security in their jobs, but to make sure that you don't have to make those staffing cuts so we can serve the community better. And then, of course, you know, how directly the, the City of Morro Bay works directly with this community, specifically such as business owners and the private homeowners out here, what we can do, you know, any type of advice that we could give to you in terms of what can be done in order to interface correctly with those businesses and to make life just a little bit easier for everybody out there. I think most people have a tremendously fond view of our local community government here. But, you know, like with any government agency, it's a matter of, you know, the rules are the rules. They are set through the state and a lot of times through the federal government, and sometimes getting through those rules as easily as possible can be a big task on hand. So I would say those, those would be really the three that I would, I would say would be interesting assignments from you folks as a, as a legislative body for this community.
Great, thank you, Michael. And last but not least, John, please.
Well, the list that's in our bylaws is pretty good, you know, the routine stuff, the quarterly budget performance reports, the investment reports, the 10-year forecast, those kind of things. But I think the most important one, without a doubt, is the annual financial report because that really becomes the city's permanent record. You know, when you were a kid in school, you always worry about things on your permanent record, and that is the one. That's the document that all the credit agencies are going to look at, and anybody who really wants to learn about the city is going to look at that document. So that document has to be completely accurate and, and well-stated and conforming to the GASB rules. And that's something the city really should be very proud of because several years running now, the city has received that award for excellence in financial reporting from the GFOA. That's a major accomplishment, and that's something that has only been done since you all have been on the council. So that's something that you should be proud of. The only other thing I can think of is that with the completion of the WRF project, there's going to be a lot of discussion and analysis in regards to how the, the money that was received through the, through the two financings gets integrated with the money that was raised by, by the rate increases and money on hand and also the One Water Project work, which is pretty large scale, and how does all that get done? And what's the best way to proceed and how to address other potential city liabilities that may not directly pertain to enterprise funds? I think that's going to be a big subject that the CFAC can help out with.
Great, John, thank you so much. And again, our thanks as a council to each and every one of you. Thank you for enduring our questions, and so we've got a great group of people, some great answers. And we'll go ahead, and what I'm going to do is, as we've done before, since we're not live and we are via Zoom, I'm going to entertain a motion. You can, you can make a motion for any number of individuals that have applied. Again, we have four individuals for four positions and, and/or whatever your pleasure may well be. And so I would, at this point in time, go ahead and entertain a motion for the CFAC Advisory Board applicant approval.
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Certainly. Councilmember Heller.
I move that we approve John Martin, Courtney Shepler, Steve Weiner, and Michael Woody to the CFAC.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Heller, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Heller to approve the applicants. Second by Councilmember Barton. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Congratulations, you've been appointed to a four-year term on the CFAC. Thank you very much.
Well, get ready to roll up your sleeve, folks. There's plenty to do, and we are excited to have not only the continuing members, but the two new members added to our CFAC Advisory Board. Welcome. And again, thank you for being part of our city and stepping forward to get involved with this important committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and, sorry to use the term, we're going to demote you folks and bring up our, first of all, council, we're going to do the Harbor Advisory Board. And we have the South Bay Los Osos representative for a four-year term ending January 31st, 2026. The right page in my packet. And for that, we do have two applicants, Jean Doughty and Raymond Purcell. And I'll go ahead and let Dana promote them. It looks like they're here. Welcome. And we will use the same process as before. We will go ahead and ask each of you, if you wouldn't mind, to give us just a one-minute overview of why you're interested in applying to our Harbor Advisory Board. And then after those introductions, each council member will be asking a question. And I'll just rotate who goes first. Again, on the part of the council, both to you, Raymond, and Jean, thank you so much for applying. Very important, one of our very important advisory boards. Thank you for stepping up and being part of the community and applying for this position. So with that, Jean, why don't you start us off and give us a little introduction, please?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Mayor, my name is Jean Doughty. I've been on the Harbor Advisory Board for 35, 37 years. I live in Crested-by-the-Sea area. I own a company called Land Sea Interface, which is located down on the old Beacon Fuel Dock. An architect and engineer and contractor, and I maintain all the bay, most of the mornings in Morro Bay. I usually are on the water three to five days a week. Almost every day I'm in Morro Bay, I consider it almost my home. So I'm looking forward to the next four years. I think we have some exciting projects on the way. That's about it.
Great, thank you, Jean. Appreciate that. Raymond, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Heding. Councilpersons, my name is Ray Purcell. I am a nurse practitioner by training. My original academic career began at Humboldt State University in Resource Management. I have some experience seasonally, primarily in recreation and some resource management with Forest Service, Department of Interior. Ultimately went back to school to become a registered nurse and did that at Cal State Bakersfield. Raised family in Bakersfield. Ultimately saw an opportunity to relocate to San Luis Obispo County and seized that. We've lived here now for about three years. My familiarity with Morro Bay began about six to seven years ago with the inception of the Sea Life Stewards Program, which is a docent program. Volunteers through California State Parks in Morro Bay. And that really just served to wet my whistle for the diversity, the natural beauty and resource of the harbor and recognizing, becoming a community member here, that there are a number of constituencies that are involved with the harbor as a whole, and that is a Other experience that I bring to this is beyond church committees and in church family, is that I spent some time as a faculty member at California Community College, Bakersfield College, as nursing faculty. And of course, there are committee assignments and responsibilities there and familiarity with committee operation. And given that campus is particularly, Bakersfield College with about 65,000 students enrolled is its own community, with its own constituency. I have spent several years as the Director of Student Health for that same institution. And there was a participant on a college administrative council. How that compares and contrasts to faculty is that they are the non-faculty positions of the operation administration of the community college. In the community, I was a member of the implementation of tobacco settlement money in the Kern Tobacco Coalition. We worked as an advisory to the administrator of those funds, which was Kern County Public Health Department. There I became familiar with the strategic planning process and community outreach among the various citizen representatives. And then finally, forming a campus health advisory, as I stated earlier, campus is made up of far more than just the student body, but representing the student body as large as it was, began with strategic planning and ultimately listening to the various campus and community representatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin our questions again. Appreciate both of you being here. We asked that you try to limit your responses to about a minute. We won't hold you to the bell being rung, but we want to make sure we get through each council member. So we'll more or less reverse the order. I'll start with Councilmember Ford. And Ray, if you could answer the question first, please. Thank you, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to both of you who are applying today. And, you know, we really appreciate you offering to provide this service for our city. And also, Jean, for your 35 to 30, I think you said possibly 37 years of service as well on this board. My question is actually the same question that I just asked our applicants for CFAC. My question is regarding your preparation going into, let's say, the upcoming meeting. What is your process for time management when it comes to preparing for, you know, when you receive your packet? Are you the type of person to ask questions ahead of time to staff, if you have any? Or are you more of a, you know, I'd rather ask it in the meeting itself? Just kind of give me an idea of what that might look like. And Jean, of course, I would say it's what have you been doing? And Raymond, what do you see yourself doing for this board?
You tagged on a few additions that are very broad. How I prepare, how do I organize my work? I am the kind of planner who appreciates having the time to consider the aspects, the perspectives of individual issues and the work before me. I like to organize those questions. I like to bring them together for myself first. I like to consider the bigger picture of the agenda at large and for a particular meeting so that I'm prepared going into that meeting. I'm also a believer in chain of command and mindful of how precious city resources and time are. And so what I would anticipate doing if I needed clarification or questions answered in advance would be to become familiar with the advisory panelists, my colleagues there, and the leadership, the chair and vice chair of the advisory prior to utilizing any other I think that you also asked some valuable questions just toward the end of your statement. And if I recall what that is, just clarify me if I'm off, is that your question was, what do I hope to achieve? Principally, I see the advisory, I see advisory in general as an endeavor to collect data, deliver data, possibly to interpret data, but also to possibly suggest policy where that's appropriate. Also, I see this as a matter of citizenship and participation in a committee in the community in a way that I had not in the past been able to do. So this is an opportunity for personal growth and citizenship growth, but also to be a representative of the constituents of the resource. Did that answer your question? Was I on target? Okay.
I apologize for making that not so clear. So yeah, really, my question was, you know, how do you prepare ahead of a meeting? What does that look like? And I apologize if I went a little around the question there, but you did answer that. So thank you for doing that.
Just keep me on task.
Thank you, Ray. Jean, please.
Councilwoman Jean, normally we receive our packets issued on Friday, so I like to look at them over the weekend. Our meetings are normally on Thursday, so that gives me a full week to look at them. After I look at the staff report, I will normally talk to people on the water, discuss it with people as I walk in the South Bay area there, and try to get a general feeling how the people I deal with on a working daily basis feel about this particular item. But when it comes to the council, excuse me, the Harbor Advisory Board meeting, I'm open to change my mind. Quite often, I will go with what somebody will bring up a point where I hadn't thought about. So I like to bring a practical knowledge to what I see, and that's how we look at it.
Thank you, Jean. Appreciate it. Councilmember Heller, please. And this time, we'll start with you, Jean.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So my question is, there's a lot going on in the harbor. Can you tell me what you think the greatest challenge relative to the harbor facing the city at this time?
Well, basically, there are capital improvements that need to be done. There's a lot of deferred maintenance over the past years. Docks in water, the beach docks need to be repaired. Some of the revampments need to be worked at. Currently, we are pursuing some grants to do some redevelopment repair work, which is all good. Money is always going to be an issue. I think the biggest challenge is how we're going to handle the next 10 years or next 15 years with the wind farm or the battery storage, and whether we become an industrial harbor or not. And I believe that Morro Bay should be for the Morro Bayans, not just for the tourists. So those are my concerns.
Thank you, Jean. Ray?
I am untried, untested somewhat. I've tried to frame in the experience that I do bring and the diversity and perspective. I think the vibrancy of the harbor resource going forward can be a prudent balance which strives to represent the various interests. I'm applying particularly to be a representative of the constituents of South Bay, so Morro Bay sphere of influence. And so I keep that priority in mind as I would integrate with the other representative of leaseholders, recreationists, visitors, and people who make their living on and out of the bay.
Great, thank you, Ray. And Ray, we'll start with you on this question. And Councilmember Barton, you're up, please. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for your answers in great detail. I would agree that the next few years are big ones for capital projects and repairs and such. And as a result, I don't have any more questions, so.
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, we'll go to Councilmember Addis, please. Again, Ray, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to say thank you, Jean, for your service, and thank you, Ray, for applying. I'm the liaison to HAB, and I've really enjoyed getting to know the folks that are on HAB and the perspective. And my question is similar to one that I asked a previous committee, which is that I view the purpose of people on these committees to give some high-level input on the work plan of council. Oftentimes, people come to the committee with lots and lots of experience and want to give detailed information or detailed feedback to staff. I'm wondering what you view as the difference between your role as a HAB member and the role of staff in terms of coordinating and facilitating HAB and working for the city?
Delidiation of responsibility is important. And it's, I'm mindful that advisories support and serve at the convenience of the mayor and of the council, and that we are asked to provide information and that that have, that it be specific, that it be reliable, accurate, timely, to interpret that data as regards our constituents and only suggest policy. So provide the product that we're asked to deliver.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Jean, please.
Yes. I think that the Harbor Advisory Board job is to advise the city council. And in doing that, we work hand-in-hand with staff. They'll make their staff report based on whatever they were charged with, either by the council or issues that come up. They'll write their report. We will review it. Sometimes we'll talk among ourselves during the meetings. Other times, we'll go out and talk to the working waterfront or concerned citizens on that particular issue. And quite often, we will talk to the staff or Eric and say, well, what do you mean by this? Or what do you think we should do on this particular item here? And then we bring it back, and then we'll have our discussion. And I think we work on a hand-to-hand basis with the staff coming up with advice to this council. That's about it.
Thanks, Jean. Appreciate that very much. And I too will forego my question. It's been answered in both of your responses, so I appreciate the comprehensive information that you've given to us as a council for consideration. Unfortunately, we don't have two positions because we have two great applicants, and so, but we are forced to make a decision, and we're only able to appoint one. But again, on the behalf of the council, I want to thank you both for stepping up. Jean, also for your service in the past, but also for both of you stepping up to want to just give of your time on this important advisory board. So with that, we'll go ahead and move to a motion. Look for a motion or entertain a motion from a council member. Councilmember Addis, I see your hand.
I'm going to move to appoint Jean Doty, but I, well, let me see if I get a second, and then can I say some more words?
Motion by Councilmember Addis to approve Jean Doty.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember. Second by Councilmember Ford. Thank you. We do have a motion and a second, and I'll go ahead and entertain any further discussion.
I just want to make a plea to Ray to please apply for Rec and Park because, as I was listening to your background, it just feels perfect. Your background in nursing, I went to Humboldt State, by the way, and my mom is a nurse, and I just don't want to lose you. And I did this when we had to make another difficult decision for a different commission where there just weren't enough open spaces. And I made the plea for a different person who then applied for HAB and is now, you know, a wonderful contributing member. So I just want to publicly ask you to please apply for Park and Rec. I don't know if it's legal for me to just make a motion to appoint you at this meeting. My guess is it isn't, but I want to put that out there.
Personally, I'm not. Sorry about that.
I know. So I do want to put that out there seriously. I just think your background with serving the community, obviously being a giving person, thinking about the health of the community and how that weaves in is just melds really well with Rec and Park. And then I want to say thank you to Gene for so many, many years of service, and I really would love to see you continue. You've been a mainstay on HAB, and so that's, you know, why I made the motion the way that I did.
I'll just say here, here, Councilmember Addis, thank you for that eloquent analysis and review of our candidates, and thank you for recognizing. Ray, Ray, I agree. I would so love to have you on one of our advisory boards, and please don't be discouraged if the vote doesn't go your way this time. And Gene, again, thank you for your service in the past, and we appreciate you greatly. Any other discussion?
No, I was just going to say I second, again, what Councilmember Addis said. So yes, Ray, I really truly appreciate you coming today. And, you know, again, you know, as I said before, if it doesn't go your way, it's, I am here to kind of sort of beg you to please follow the advice that Councilmember Addis put forth because I truly see the value in your service, and I would be so excited to have you on one of our boards, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Okay. Any other comments? If not, I will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedy?
Yes.
Motion carries by vote.
Great. Thank you again, Ray, for being here. Gene, welcome back again, and thank you for your continued service.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I've been so pleased to work on the Harbor Advisory Board for the last 35, 37 years. I'm looking forward to another four years. It's been my pleasure to work with you guys.
Great. Thank you so much for that.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to demote you unfortunately at this time and bring in Mr. Sean Green. This is for council, this is Harbor Advisory Board Member-at-Large Representative. We have one vacancy for a four-year term ending January 31st, 2026. And with that, I will welcome Sean.
Thank you.
Hi, Sean.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, good. I think you know the drill. You've been through this before, but basically, we'll ask if you'd give us like a one-minute introduction as to why you want to serve on the Harbor Advisory Board, and then we'll go through council member questions. One question per council member for you, and then we'll move for a motion. So again, welcome, Sean. Really appreciate you stepping up and applying for this position, and we've appreciated your involvement in the city in so many different areas in the past, and thank you for that as well. So welcome, Sean.
Sure. Thanks, council. Why am I interested in the Harbor Board? Well, I tend to think that this is the one area of the city that's been relatively overlooked for a long time, and I feel like city leadership may be on board that, you know, regarding the idea that Harbor is next in line for some major improvements, both systemically, structurally, all of the above. I have some experience as part of the Tourism Advisory Board. I have some experience, a lot of active experience, working with the Planning Commission, including a number of subcommittees, one of which is the Public Benefits Subcommittee, and then active in the design work that they're working on right now. I'm a daily user of the waterfront. Just to piggyback on something that Gene just mentioned, that the waterfront is not just for tourists, it's for people in, that it's for Morro Bayans. But I want to make a distinction that it's not just for Morro Bayans with boats. I think that there's a disconnect with the waterfront community and the public at large that can be improved over time, and I hope to be a part of that as a kind of representative at large of the residents of Morro Bay. I have a financial background from college and a few years as a professional. I was a public auditor of local governments early in my career, so I'm pretty familiar with the kind of shoebox accounting that sometimes takes place at some very small jurisdictions. And my feeling, and based on my experience with Morro Bay, that's kind of what's been happening on the harbor. And again, I think that that's something that can get cleaned up over time. I was super impressed with the candidates applying for CFAC, and I'm always impressed with the people working with CFAC. I would step down in a heartbeat if we could get some of that talent working with Harbor or to have CFAC take on some of the financially-related projects dealing with Harbor because their talent could be super useful in a place that is short-staffed and focused, you know, on public safety and some other very important aspects that they do well. So those are some of the reasons why I'm interested in working with the harbor. I think I'll leave it at that, and then I'll just answer your questions as they come up.
Good. Thanks, Sean. I'm going to go ahead and start this time. As I think you know, Sean, there's a huge need for increased revenues to fund the Harbor Enterprise Fund. It has suffered from the lack of ability to fund a capital improvement program over the last 20-plus years. We estimate that there are $600-plus thousand a year needed for capital improvements to not only the infrastructure, but also for beautification and other issues along the harbor. The question is, given that information, what would you see as the top two opportunities for improving revenues for the Harbor Enterprise Fund?
Well, I think to start with, and I'm not sure this is something that folks at home are well aware of, but the Harbor Fund is an enterprise fund, which means it's supposed to be self-sustaining and hasn't been really for some time. And when I say it hasn't been, the fund is not insolvent, but it has been unable to complete the improvements that are tied up in the legalese of the actual Harbor Enterprise Fund. Now, I know that there's a movement that may end up on the ballot where folks are pushing for a property tax assessment of residents to basically bridge the gap financially in the same way that we've already asked the residents of regarding the sewer plants and for public safety on last year's ballot. I think folks at home are kind of getting tired of footing that bill, so we need to think of creative revenue ways, creative ways to improve revenues. And first off, we really need to take a serious look at harbor lease management in a way that didn't fully take place, in my opinion, with the minor revision of harbor lease management policies in 2020. We have appraisals that are 20 years overdue on some of these properties, and we have artificially low rents that were tied into from past lease signings. But this isn't something that only happened decades ago. It's continuing to happen. So I think that the number one thing we need to do is we need to look at all expired leases and immediately put them out to RFP or revalue them at today's prices rather than looking back to 1993 appraisals, which are continuing to be used for some of these rental amounts. It actually costs about the same to rent a small, private boutique retail space downtown as it costs on a monthly basis to rent a 3,000-square-foot building on the waterfront. And that just, that equation just doesn't balance. Now, I also strongly support physical improvements on the waterfront, so I'm open to things like the property tax assessment or alternate ways to raise funding, as long as those are conditional upon structural or systemic changes regarding the management of those lease sites because those lease sites are what are supposed to self-support Harbor, and it just hasn't happened.
Great, Sean. Thanks so much. I appreciate that. Councilmember Heller, please. Your question, if you have one.
I do. Thank you and welcome, Sean. You've played an important role in some committees and a number of different functions, and I'm happy to see you applying for this position. If you could identify one single issue that's a key issue to help the harbor, what would that be, that one issue?
I think in terms of one, if you had to pin me on one issue, I think it would really be something about the public friendliness of the waterfront space. And, you know, because that's something that we see on a daily basis. And so when you walk past, let's say, like a stacks or a yacht club, and you see six-foot privacy fencing around, like for like 100 linear feet on the waterfront, then pedestrians can no longer see any of the water, and they can't see the boats right there. And that, that lack of, like, interactivity or being able to see what the working waterfront is that we kind of advertise or talk about, I think really hurts our product and the waterfront experience. And I think there's so much opportunity because if you're six foot three like me and you can see over the fences, there's cool stuff back there. If you, actually, kind of related to that, if you, if any of you head up to, and I'm sure Jen knows this because her office is right near there, but if you head up to Doran's this week and look out over the bay, it's the best view that you've seen in years, in part because the Off the Hook Building just got demolished, and we see the value of being able to literally physically see the water because of that 15-foot height limit at the boatyard. Being able to physically access the water, being able to physically access restrooms, being able to know where those restrooms are, walking along well-marked paths with excellent signage, and really being able to interact with the water and our fishing community is what non-boating Morro Bayans want, it's what visitors want, and it's hopefully what the waterfront community should want as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Councilmember Addis, please.
Hi, Sean. It's good to see you, and I'm glad you're applying again. Excuse me. Similar question to what I had on other boards. You know, a lot of people apply for committees and serve as volunteers and have a very high level of knowledge and attention to detail. As the liaison to HAB, I've always felt like it was HAB's role to sort of give high-level input, to work on the council's work plan, to keep the ball moving forward. So how would you differentiate your role as a volunteer on HAB with that of staff whose job it is to facilitate, to provide information, and our employees of the city?
Yeah, I think there's some give and take. Certainly, there's a level of respect for the skills and the background and experience of our staff. I'm proud of our Harbor Department in many ways. They do so many things well. I do think that there's some aspect of, you know, simply looking at council goals and figuring out how we can apply those at the harbor level or at the departmental level. Just taking, you know, I just happen to pull up the city goals, the most recent ones that are published, which are back from, you know, 2019, 2020, and three of the four goals, achieve economic and fiscal sustainability, improve public infrastructure, and improve community engagement with the community are three goals that, you know, to some degree may have eluded Harbor. And so at a high level, that's a disconnect that we need to bridge, and that's, it's a challenge because there is a kind of bubble there, insulation on the waterfront, and it's something that we want to be respectful of, but also bring awareness to the people of Morro Bay who know nothing about what's going on on the waterfront, and they definitely should. Problems on the waterfront are Morro Bay's problems, and yet people at home don't know either that these problems exist or why they exist. And it's just a, it's a matter of communication and kind of bridging the gap where information gaps exist, and then addressing problems head-on with, like, much clearer transparency about what the problems are and how we might solve them.
Thank you, Sean. And Councilmember Barton, please. Your question.
Well, I'd like to give my time to you, Sean, to pick one other issue, one other burning issue that you are hoping to address.
Give me one second to look at my list.
I figured you had one.
In terms of management logistics, I think this is a rhetorical question that I keep coming back to myself. If I owned, the city of Morro Bay owns the waterfront essentially, or we've been appointed custodians of the Tydland's Trust, which is a huge responsibility that we sometimes forget to take seriously, I think. So when I ask myself, if I owned 50 pieces of real estate on the waterfront on the Central Coast, how would I manage them? This is, it's a huge question that needs to have, take us, you know, we need to take a serious look at, not whether it's at the Harbor Advisory Board level or council level. We need to look at things like timing of appraisal, audits of gross percent sales tax, which, you know, seems to have flown under the radar for decades. I know personally that, you know, I've submitted some public records requests just to kind of scratch the surface on a kind of citizens audit and have met dead ends and roadblocks. And that just can't be. We have a $2 million budget at the Harbor Enterprise Fund. I know that when I was working on T-Bid, that was a budget half the size, a million-dollar budget, and we regularly received spreadsheets, monthly reports, et cetera, and yet on the harbor, if you look at their agendas, you know, we're looking at more like two-sentence agendas with an oral announcement from a finance ad hoc committee. And, you know, I just don't think that cuts it in terms of transparency. We need to be out there and public about these lease terms, about what sites are coming up for expiration so that we can get those out to public RFPs and stop allowing these like two, three, four, five-year gaps of kind of dead time where we lose revenue.
Thanks, Sean. Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Sean. I, you know, I'm looking at all my questions I have written down, and they've all been checked off. So I guess I'll just ask you this. You are so involved with all of the boards and your input, your valuable input and your knowledge of Morro Bay. So my question to you is what inspires you or what has inspired you to be so involved in our community? Because you put a lot of time and energy into it, and I'm just curious what fuels that, that energy, what keeps you going and keeps you involved?
Well, you want me to tell you what I tell my shrink?
Okay.
Well, to be honest, I've tried to whittle down the number of things that I care about, and it's really hard because I go all in on the things that I care about and therefore can't let them go. Some of those you guys are probably well aware of, one of which is the harbor finance situation, Coleman Park, public access on the waterfront, some other things like that. But, you know, as frustrating as it can be, you know, if I don't, I feel sometimes that if I don't tune into a meeting or two, something kind of slips through the cracks, and it's, I feel partly responsible for the city and the residents in that, in that respect. So I know one thing personally that frustrated me and my neighbors out in the Beach Street District, I vowed not to tune into a meeting for a month or so to kind of relax and take care of myself. And sure enough, during that one-month stretch, the Surf Street Stairs got approved for closure by council, and that really frustrated me, and it was pretty heartbreaking, and it's heartbreaking every time I walk by it. And so that's kind of it. I feel like if I'm not doing it, someone might not do it. And so that's part of the reason why I'm here today, subjecting myself to more responsibility.
Great, Sean. I've always appreciated your passion and your tenacity and, man, your ability to handle a diverse and large workload and the time that you spend, you know, giving input on so many different things to the city. I just got to say thanks for that, and we appreciate it. Councilmembers, we have one applicant for a member-at-large, and I'll entertain a motion if anybody's inclined. Looking for a hand if I can see one. All right. Councilmember Barton, I see your hand.
I would like to. I would like to, uh, move approval of Sean Green for the position of, uh, the member at large.
Okay. We have a motion by councilmember Barton to approve, uh, Mr. Sean Green. Do we have a second?
A mayor, I'll second.
Second by councilmember Heller. Ask if there's any further input or comments. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call for the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedy?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
So, welcome. Get ready to work, man. We appreciate you. Thanks. Thanks so much for stepping up to the plate. Um, again, appreciate, um, all of those that applied for our positions. Um, we'll be going out for our, um, Recreation Advisory Committee as well. So we look forward to applicants in the community that might be interested in that as we reopen that opportunity. Thank you, councilmembers, for your engagement. Great questions tonight. And, uh, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. We'll reconvene at 5:30 for our regular city council meeting. Thank you. Good evening. Be safe and be well.